Welcome to the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners meeting with your Chairman, Christopher S. Cohelus. Your Commissioners include, from District One, Commissioner Ed Newsom; from District Two, Commissioner Victor Edwards; from District Three, Commissioner Clinton Johnson; from District Four, Commissioner Russell Gray; from District Five, Commissioner Gloria Gaines; and from District Six, Commissioner Anthony Jones. Also joining us is your County Administrator, Michael McCoy; Assistant County Administrator, Scott Addison; County Clerk, Jawan Ware; and County Attorney, Spencer Lee. Thank you for joining your Dougherty County Commission meeting.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Let's try that again. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right, good deal. Go ahead and call a order. The Dougherty County Commission regular meeting is set for July 19, 2021. Start with the roll call. I note for the record that all Commissioners are present and in person. I would ask for everyone to stand for the prayer and then the pledge. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the time that we have to come here to do work for the citizens of Dougherty County. Thank you for the resources that you've given us, the sustenance you have given us, and the patience and strength and resilience you have given us over the past several years. Thank you for allowing us to move through a lot of darkness and towards the light and to become a stronger, happier, and healthier community. Please continue to bless this Commission and the folks that work with the county and our citizens with wisdom and collaboration and the ability to divide the resources that we have in the way that is best for our people. In Christ's name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Consider for action the minutes of the June 21st regular meeting and June 28th special called meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? If being known, we'll call the matter for a vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Delegations, this is where the Commission will hear comments on those items pertaining to Dougherty County for which a public hearing has now been held or scheduled. We ask everyone to be brief, to the point, and considerate of time for others. And today, we have Tax Director Shawna Josie and Chief Appraiser Joseph McPherson, who are present to discuss the certified 2021 tax digest for the countywide MNO and Special Services District. Good morning, Ms. Josie.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. McCoy. Okay, today I'm here to present to you the certified tax digest that the Board of Tax Assessor submitted for the 2021 tax year. And we do have a PowerPoint here to start off with. Just give you a summary of the tax digest. Over to the left is a description of the classification. In the middle is the assessed value, and over to the far right is the tax levy amount. So if you go down to where it says net MNO digest, that's the $2,011,965,474. Over to the far right is tax levy amount, it's the $31,324,289. You have your flipper reimbursement, which is $208,378. And your pilot amount estimated at $2,086,391, giving you a total of $33,619,58. On the next page is your comparison from your 2020 tax year and your projected 2021 year, based on the 2020 mileage rate, which is 15.569. If you just see with the projected amount, the projected amount is the $31,324,289. Of course, your flipper reimbursement and your pilot giving you that total of $33,619,58. And if you see over to the far right is your difference, and you've got like a negative .35%. But if you go back up to the very top, or the MNO, and go across at the very top, that's that .34%.
So the value of the digest went up?
Very, very little. That .34% is, which is very, very little, not much change at all. The next page is your consolidation of all of your classifications on the consolidated digest, starting with your residential, of course, your agricultural, your preferential, your commercial, your industrial properties, your public utilities, your motor vehicles, mobile homes, timber, and your heavy-duty equipment. And of course, your gross, and if you go all the way across on that gross line, it's highlighted to the very, to the middle where you've got highlighted assessed value for 2021. You see that $2,242,68,315, less your homestead exempted properties, which is your $230,102,841, giving you that net digest of the $2,011,965,474. And if you see over to the far right highlighted, you see that .34% again. Okay, on the net, this page is your homestead property exemptions. And if you see in the middle, and as I said before, this is a comparison from your 2020 to 21 tax year. At the very end, your total for your homestead exemptions is the $230,102,841. Most of your exemptions are from the VA exemptions that we have in Dougherty County for our veterans. On the next page is your actual exempt properties, which would be your public properties, your religious properties, charity, hospital, education, and of course, the others. So the 2021 year, you have a total of $578,423,441. And most of that increase is from the public properties. The next page is the worksheet that we use to calculate our flipper reimbursement, and that's the valuation for it, $13,793,107.
Commissioner Gaines?
Go back to the previous slide.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that most of the increase in the value of public property...
Yes, ma'am. If you look at number eight, I'm sorry, I was trying to get that PowerPoint, the Excel converted over to a PowerPoint, and it did not come over, and that's 2.68, I believe, on that and not 102. It's 2.3, I'm sorry, and not 102. But the overall, if you're looking over to the far right, you see the public, the public is 2.45%. And then, of course, you have charitable, which is 6.50%.
So what are we doing with public property? Is the value of the public property going up, or are we buying more public property?
It could be. You know, there are different things. Now, we have the land bank that has been added. So that is also included. We have any property that's been categorized as land bank authority. That would be public property as well. But it would have to do with any public properties. That could be city, state, government, all of the above, so. Not just Dougherty County.
Yeah, I know, it's not Dougherty, it's not just, because I don't know if we body it, but that's fairly substantial, and it's property coming off of the tax digest, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Are we, well, you know, the purpose of the land bank, of course, is to put the property back into
Yes, ma'am.
public hands. So they should be having a positive impact at some point, maybe not right now, but at some point on, if that's where the problem lies. It appears to me the problem probably is much more in the purchase of properties by local governments.
I agree, yes, ma'am. The land bank will have a very, very small amount, but it is included.
Yeah, we should all, all of us, elected bodies, should be mindful of the deleterious effect that buying of private property has on our tax digest. Right?
Yes, ma'am, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. We went over the flipper worksheet. Now, we're on the five-year history. I'm going to concentrate mostly on the 2020 year and the 2021. If you see the first white highlighted column, I mean, row, you see the gross digest. So for 2020, it was $2,216,661. And for 2021, it's $2,242,68,315. If you subtract your exemptions and you get your net digest, which is the next highlighted white column, I mean, row, it's $2,011,965,474. And when you take your mileage rate, its proposed mileage rate at 15.569, which is the 2020 year, you can see that difference, which is also on your summary page, is the $31,324,290, which is seeing an increase of $105,673, which again is that .34% that we were talking about. And the next slide is your rollback. Now, it's not good visualized there, but I did ask Bree to give you a copy so that you could see it more clearly. And of course, in the first column to the left, you have your 2020 digest, and you have the inflation growth of the $7,133,158. Making adjustment to that, giving you your 2021 digest. So if you go down to the first gray area, which will give you again, that $2,242, subtracting your exemption for homesteads, then you get that $2,019,65 again. The proposed mileage rate, if you're using that, would be 15.569. If you go down to where you see the star for the rollback mileage rate, that would be 15.514. And of course, if you're proposing the 15.569, that would give you a .35% increase based on what their rollback calculation is. So from there, if you choose to use the prior year mileage rate, which is the 15.569, and not the rollback, then we would have to do a taxing, property tax increase advertisement and have public hearings. And the dates, tentative dates for May, I mean, August the 9th, that morning, and then six o'clock in the afternoon, and for August the 16th. And that's to allow for the requirements by the state. You have to have two weeks in advance prior to you adopting the mileage rate for that mileage rate that you have. That is more than what the rollback is. The next slide is just a copy of the ad that would be advertised if you choose the prior year mileage rate. And at the very bottom, it tells you that 15.69 is a .055 mil increase. Of course, on an average of a property that's, excuse me, on an average of a property that is $100,000, then your tax amount increase would be $2.09. If you, non-homestead, $150,000 would be $3.30. The next ad is just a Q and A that we usually use, just reminding taxpayers that this is not a tax increase. Overall, it's the same mileage rate overall. It's just that according to what the rollback is, that's what the state requires for that. The next section is for your Special Services District. And as I said before, to the far left, you have your classifications. To the middle is your assessed value, and to the right is your revenue tax amount. So the net for the Special Services District is $562,208,730. Over to the far right, that's $5,157,141. Your flipper exemption and your pilots, $570,000, giving you a total of $5,894,773. The next is your comparison from your 2020 to 2021 projected year. If you can see, the amount which was on the first page was the $5,894,773. Over to the right, you see that change difference. If you go back to the very first row, you see that $134,327, which is a 2.67% increase. Next is the consolidation of all classifications of property from your real property, your real, your real property, commercial, agricultural, industrial, of course, your motor vehicles and your mobile homes, your timber and your heavy-duty, which is included as well. And on the highlighted row, you see that's your gross at the very far, where it says 21 assessed value will be $662,153,910, less your exemptions, that give you the $562,208. If you look at, go across, you'll see that 2.67% increase again. Next page is your homestead exemptions. It's pretty much the same. Most of the exemptions are from the VA exemptions. That total, if you see in the middle for the 2021 highlighted, is $99,945,180. Next page is your property exempts, which giving you for this year is $178,000,301,675. Next is your flipper worksheet for your calculation, which give you a total of $18 million value, assessed value, $749,139. Next is your five-year history, again, giving you your gross of the, for 2021, over to the far right, this is $662,153, less your exemptions, giving you a net of the $562,208,730. And if you go down to the last year proposed, the last year mileage rate is 9.173. Your tax amount is the $5,157,000, giving you that 2.67% again, showing that increase.
Mr. Johnson?
Good morning again.
Yes, sir.
In 2020, that the net tax increase, why do you think it was, it was trending low that year, actually? Was it COVID related or something?
Could you tell, are you looking, okay. For 2020, what now? Sorry.
The net tax increase.
For 2020?
Yes, ma'am, at the bottom. It was around $120,000, and $107,000, and then it dropped to $46,000, and now it's trending back up. What do you think is the cause for that difference? And you can speculate.
Well, that would be a comparison. When you're looking at that 172, it's comparison to your 18-year and not necessarily, but the difference between that would probably be, let's see, your motor vehicles is decreasing, and that will continue until, I guess, it phases out. So it still has an impact on the digest until it actually fades out, which that is, of course, being, the tax is replacing that as we go forward, and it will be more of a line item on the budget for your revenue.
So the following year in the motor vehicle, they started to give us the money back sooner? From the state?
No, sir. They're not giving it back.
It's actually going down. Thank you, I see it.
So part of that, I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Josie, but it's the, you pay tax on cars when you purchase them, and that goes to the county of residence of the owner. So if we have a high proportion of residents in Dougherty County who lease cars or rent cars, then we're not getting auto sales for Dougherty County residents, correct?
You do still get taxed on that, but the percentage is a difference, but yes, you still get it.
How does that work, though? Who pays the taxes?
The, the financial institution, of course, is charging the tax, the owner, and it's being paid that way.
So if the owner is, if the owner, let's say I have a car lot and I lease, and I lease cars, but I live in Cobb County, but I own this inventory here, I'm paying taxes in Cobb County on that inventory, right?
Well, that would be where the property is located, so you would have to have it here in Dougherty County.
I got you. Okay.
In summation, it seems that real and personal property is doing fine in the unincorporated area.
Yes, it's pretty much, the digest in a total is stagnant.
I'm sorry?
But the digest in a total for countywide is stagnant. But there were some construction in the Special Services District that caused that slight increase. But overall, it's pretty much with that.
Well, what's driving the increase is the real and personal property.
Yes, ma'am.
In the unincorporated area.
Yes, ma'am.
Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am. Along with public utilities as well, of course, you know, the public utilities has been increasing over the years.
Where is that reflected in here? What category? That's in real.
That would be your utility. On the five-year history, it's combined with your real property.
I'm sorry?
On the five-year history, the public utility is included in the real and the personal, so yes, ma'am.
So that's what's driving it?
Yes, ma'am.
Because the others are generally down. It's the real and personal property that's doing it.
Yes, ma'am, and basically, the real and the personal is the majority of the tax digest.
Yes.
I hear you, but I've been here on this commission when the value of the digest went down versus going up, even if it is marked, even if it is a nominal increase. Going forward versus going backwards, in my opinion, is a, is a good thing and a sign that there is some growth, and sometimes you have to build momentum. And I think that's a positive sign. Actually shows our citizens that they're getting more value for their homes. And I think if you talk to real estate agents right now in Dougherty County, they are selling houses like hotcakes, and literally, it is, it is completely a seller's market. It is impossible to get a house. And home values are going up significantly. And even though there may be, I think I saw a $2 or a $3 increase to the overall tax value, or, excuse me, to the tax bill, the overall value that people are seeing in terms of equity in their homes is a heck of a lot more than $2 or $3. So I'm thankful for that.
And I think the shift, and I think, I think what we'll see, I think we'll see a better view of this probably next year this time. That's what I'm thinking. They still don't talk to the realtors as well. I mean, that's what they're saying, that homes are just flying, they're just buying left and right.
We had a tremendous amount of housing stock that was rebuilt completely with insurance dollars. And while at the time it was hard to sort of find something to be thankful for when everybody had pine trees through their homes, it always strikes me as I drive down Third Avenue or through the area on the east side and south side that was struck by the January 22nd tornado, I look at all of the roofs, and all of them are virtually brand-new. They all look the same, and I'm thankful for that.
You know, we're always thankful on the light side.
Yes, ma'am.
Until we get our tax bill.
I know, I know, I know, I know. Well, we're all practicing gratitude, so thank you very much. Anything else, Ms. Josie?
Yes, sir, I want to just go over the Special Services rollback, and if... And if you refer to your handout again for, uh, more visual copy, uh, the rollback, you have your twenty-twenty type digest and your inflationary growth. And over to the far right is your twenty-twenty-one digest, as highlighted in the blue, uh, the six hundred and sixty-two million, uh, less your exemptions, ninety-nine, uh, million, uh, giving you a net digest of five hundred and sixty-two million, two oh eight, seven thirty. Uh, if, uh, the county decides to adopt the prior year millage rate, which is nine point one seven three, you look down in the, below where you see the asterisk, the rollback millage is nine point one four six, uh, and if the proposed millage rate is nine point one seven three, you would see a point thirty percent, uh, increase based on that inflationary growth. Uh, this, uh, the next page is a copy of the press release and at the bottom is the same dates as it is for the countywide, August the ninth, that morning at ten AM and nine, six PM that night. And then of course, August the sixth, where you adopted millage rate, uh, for the, uh, twenty-twenty-one tax year. The next one is the, uh, actually advertisement that will be advertised if there is, uh, if the millage rate, uh, remain the same. You would see down at the very bottom, the nine point one seven three millage, uh, which is a point zero two seven mil increase, uh, which we, uh, allow you, uh, for a hundred thousand dollar value houses of one, uh, dollar and three cents. And for non-homesteaded property, for a hundred and fifty thousand average, is one dollar and sixty-two cents. And on the very last page is just a timeline to give you, uh, some, uh, perspective of where you would be, uh, as I stated. If we do not, uh, roll back, then you would have to have the public hearings. And it will start with August the ninth, as we stated on the hea- the hearing, I mean, the ads for your first and your second, uh, public hearing. And then August the sixteenth, the third hearing as well as the date, uh, to adopt the millage rate for the twenty-twenty-one tax year for tax levy for countywide and for special services district. And we're projecting to submit the tax digest on August the twenty-third to the, uh, Department of Revenue.
Okay. Mr. McCoy, I understand it's, it's the recommendation of staff and, and finance committee, am I correct? Or just staff?
Staff.
Staff, that we, uh, maintain the millage rate at the current rate, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and I think that we need to arrive at consensus today on that issue as to whether or not we are going to maintain the millage rate or we're going to roll it back or do something else. Uh, and so I'm gonna open that for discussion here today. And we'll say parenthetically, um, that we were faced with this last year as well, which was a nominal increase in the overall value. And we are, in terms of financial forecasting, we are utilizing, um, ARP dollars to affect, um, what is a much-needed pay increase for our public safety, but we're gonna have to, uh, be able to address that issue on a forward-moving basis. And in the past, I think we, um, you know, we, we had to make a tough decision, what was it, about four years ago, Mr. McCoy?
Yes, sir.
And, and raising the overall millage rate, um, and it would be my respectful and humble observation to this commission, uh, very humbly, that if we were to roll back now, we would effectively be giving up the ground that we've gained in terms of value in our investment. Uh, and perhaps just for short-term, um, cessation of any sort of, you know, some folks that might be upset that they had a two or three-dollar increase in their overall property taxes. Uh, but my observation was, eh, last year, I didn't get a single complaint, uh, where we maintained, uh, the millage rate at its value. And it's secondarily my observation that we've got a lot of people that are really, really happy refinancing their homes right now and getting a lot more equity out of their homes at lower interest rates. Uh, and that's, that's my observation, so I'll, I'll ask, um, I'll, I'll begin with Commissioner Newsom, who's the Chair of Finance Committee. Um, if you're in agreement that we should, I'm asking if you're in agreement that we should keep the, the, uh, uh, the millage rate the same.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Edwards.
Repeat what you just said. Yeah, I mean, 'cause I wanna make sure that, I guess, for me going down, going forward, that we able to, I guess you use the word, to stay strong with our investment, with the, with the, uh, the county employees, so that's kind of where I'm, so will we still be able to do what we saying in the future with our county employees with rolling back?
When I'm, no, no, I'm not proposing to roll back.
Okay.
Uh, I think that if we roll back, first of all, yeah, we're not guaranteed anything, we're not guaranteed more of, but, uh, in terms of positioning ourselves strategically and financially, the ARP dollars will go away after some point. We've gotta find an effective way to maintain the salary increases to our public safety officials. If we were to roll back the millage rate, that would be literally a step in the wrong direction financially. Does that make sense, Commissioner?
Yeah, I didn't want to cut what you were saying.
Yes, sir.
You said in that lawyer form, oh, yeah, I wanna make sure that, I have no problem with, uh, keeping it, making sure that not just for those, um, first responders, but for those six hundred and fifty-two employees. And we've been, um, I mean, you guys have done a wonderful job in the past, in the past, in the past. But now we got to go forward and make sure that we address that and as for one, uh, even down to the citizens, I think they respect us based on saying, hey, we continue to get the up, the utmost services. So even with, I mean, that.
Mr. Chairman. To Victor's point, I, I, I think that what we're looking at here is, you know, is, is a moving forward. Uh, I think the Finance Committee is well aware of the work that's gotta be done there. Uh, we're not gonna rock the ball on that. Uh, we've, we've got to figure out, and, and it's our job to do that, it's everybody's job up here to do that, is figure out where we're going moving forward. Uh, this is the part two of the part one we're doing today, so, uh, it's not going to, uh, it's, it's not going away. So we have to figure out the best strategy moving forward to, to pave this thing moving forward. And, um, I, I, I think that, uh, we can get that done. It's just gonna, we, we've gotta have this survey back and study it to see what the overall impact is. Uh, we're, we're sort of flying right now, uh, without enough information. So we're well aware of the job that's gonna move forward to get this done, you know, in equitable way for our taxpayers and for our employees.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Chair.
All right, very good. Thank, thank you, Commissioner Edwards, for your comments and, and your very, uh, very good insights. So Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, yes, sir, I, I, I have to separate what we're talking about here. This increase is based on something that we did some years back, and this is just a fruit of that. It's not a lot of increase, I think it's a hundred thousand and one fund and a two percent, I don't know the number on the second fund. But it's the technical wording of rollbacks or millages that confuse the topic. So I would like for us to maintain our current millage rate and use those, those, that, that extra money to go back in our general fund. And this is the reason why we increased the taxes four years ago, to, to, to roll them back would be to throw away all the hard work that we put in years back. So my, my, my view is to keep that millage rate the same in both, uh, special services and the general fund. Uh, to the point that we're talking about, I think here, you're talking about ARP dollars going toward employees and so on and so forth, I think that's part of another conversation.
Yes, sir.
That is completely separate from the question that you're asking.
Agreed, um, that's, it's a very good point that you make, um, and I just, I've offered that sort of as financial forecasting, so to speak. Um, but your point's well-taken. Commissioner Johnson?
I, I've always been a person that follows staff's recommendations, obviously, sitting close to the fire and that's what they do and that's what we pay them to do. And I don't think we need to interfere with that. I, I concur with, uh, Commissioner Johnson and, and, uh, the rest of you as well. We just need to, just let the sleeping dog lay.
All right, very good. Commissioner Gaines?
Um, something is, is worrying me about this, and that is the, the burden on the special services district. It, there, there will be a more, although minor, a greater impact on, uh, folks in the special services district, am I correct?
I don't know that's how I read that, but.
Am I correct?
It, it's actually. The amount, well, so the millage rate is, is staying the same.
Of course, I, I understand that, but I'm talking about dollars out of people's pockets.
It was very similar, if I recall, it was a two dollars.
Dollars out of people's pocket will be greater in the special services district than in the overall digest, am I correct?
If the millage rate remains the same in the special district.
That is true, right.
Actually, I don't think so, ma'am, hold on one moment. We'll get back tomorrow.
And that money will stay in the special services district's, uh, funds and will not all go to the M and O? I mean, the general fund, am I correct?
Well, when you're looking at your millage rate, um, proportion, that proportion would be, uh, you have your countywide portion as well as your special, uh, services district's proportion. Um, for the special services with the homestead, and we're talking about homestead citizens, is one dollar and three cents. And which is in the, uh, incorporated ra- area is two dollars and nine cents. So you're having more of an increase 'cause you're talking about countywide versus just the special services district.
So it is greater, the impact is greater.
I think what she said was just the office.
Countywide, right?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, uh, we got.
The countywide is two dollars and nine cents, but we're talking countywide. Uh, the special services, which is the unincorporated area, uh, for an average of a hundred thousand, uh, in value property, is one dollar and three cents.
Okay, and so.
So you're talking about a different proportion, so, uh, you're talking countywide versus a small portion, which is the unincorporated special services district.
So it's less.
So it's less, yes.
Yeah, it costs a dollar or three per hundred thousand in the unincorporated part, it's two dollars and nine cents for the rest, for the countywide, uh, difference on a hundred thousand dollar house.
Right.
Correct.
Fine. Did I have your question, Commissioner Gaines?
Um, I, I've gotta look at it a little more carefully because I'm obviously not understanding something, so please go ahead.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Gray, are you in consensus?
Yes, I'm in consensus.
All right, very good. Let's, uh, move on.
Can you, can you please send me this presentation?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I'll be happy to send it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Josie. Any other delegations that I previously signed up to which should be heard at this time? There being none, we'll move, oh, sorry, uh, good morning, Mr. Wright.
Good morning, just wanted to, uh, bring, uh, rehash, uh, I think it's a gen- I have a nine D. Let, let me tell you what's at stake here.
You said nine B?
D, D as in doll.
Excuse me?
It may be eight D, but I think it's not, in other words, the, 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 the two mil increase for the sheriff office and Mr. Sam Allen, that's what it's about.
Go ahead, Mr. Wright.
Four million dollars. Let me look at it again to make sure. No, that's six D. That, that is six D. Now, we brought this to your attention before that we needed to do some additional vetting on this and this comes from not understanding FASB and GAFB rules. But let me tell you what the compound effect of what you're proposing to do today. First of all, you, if you do this, next year, you're gonna have to pay, uh, Mr. Ed Hall twenty-four hundred dollars, which is what he get a day for driving back from Atlanta into Atlanta to do bookkeeping. But I'm explaining it to you, and you can still give the twenty-four hundred dollars plus to Ed if he want to. But that's a consequence of what you're discussing now. Now, when you do this, if you approve this, next year in this time, a couple of things are gonna be immediately happen. First of all, your foreign balance is gonna be reduced by fifty percent. So you will not have six million dollars in foreign balance next year to carry forward. From thirteen million, you're going down to six million. So understand that what you're doing has tremendous consequences. That's because we don't understand what we're doing and why. And I went back and checked, uh, somebody called me and said, well, William, uh, you keep saying all these people are clueless. Well, I'm saying, look at the results. How in the world can we be ha- having a problem with sixty-two thousand dollars and we've lost twelve thousand people? If you look at your M and O budget, something is just wrong or someone is lying. Now, let me explain. First of all, your foreign balance gonna be reduced by fifty percent. So next year, you have to do one or two things. When, when, you brought Mr. Hall here before, he told you to go up three mils, which was a thirty-three percent increase in our tax rate. Now, we could've told you that and we were only charging a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, but no, you said, well, uh, well, if you go back to June twenty eighth, we gave you, uh, a PowerPoint that showed all this information. We assisted twenty-five hundred businesses. Each one of those sheets on that June twenty eighth handout represented an eight hundred thousand dollar worth of revenue that we did during those PPP workshop. That was twenty sheets on there, eight million dollars. And then you gonna struggle about sixty thousand dollars to cheat us out of it? Your foreign balance will reduce by fifty percent. Next year, you'll have the uncanny duty of raising the millage two mils and you'll be at seventeen point six nine, or you take the remaining six million dollars and be broke. So understand what you're doing. I went back and checked that movie clueless 'cause I enjoyed it so much. There was Britney Spears, Taylor Swift, uh, two other European superstars, but the prime star in that was Alicia Silverstone. And she was indeed clueless. In other words, when you look at art form a lot of times, it's supposed to manifest life, or sometimes maybe reciprocal of that. But next year, we'll be in a position where we will have to raise the millage by two mils to make up for the four million dollars we give to the sheriff. Now, the sheriff office and Mr. Sam Allen came and said, well, blah, 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 well, that's fine. But just, just about me before a minute, let me explain something to you. When I was working for the university, I remember John Kreschien, who was the president of Georgia State University at the time. It was nineteen ninety-two. After the election, uh, a couple issues came up. President Kreschien had got appointed by President Clinton to be UN ambassador to the New Zealand. Now, President Kreschien was making six hundred thousand dollars a year. When he got that appointment, his salary was reduced by sixty percent. My point is, in public service, everyone makes the same amount of money. And if you look at box thirteen of your W-2, there is no value assigned to all of those officers in the sheriff department for getting a brand-new F-150 super duty. That would be another six, eight thousand dollars in tax. But another thing, when, when President Kreschien took the job to be ambassador to New Zealand, his wife spent two million dollars of state taxpayer's money. She had just done this renovation of President's palace there at Georgia State. So when they were investigating whether or not he was a good steward of public money, that they questioned President Kreschien. My point is, in public service. President Kreschien. My point is, in public service, you have to recognize it is just that because there are so many perks there. President Kreschien, I mean, from Georgia, he took the job for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to be UN ambassador. Everybody that worked in the United States Congress that is elected make the same thing. All the senators and all of the members of the House make the same thing. All of the members of the president's staff make the same thing. You think that, most of my family were in the military. I remember going in the Navy Reserve, only getting eighty dollars a month. And you come in and make an issue about sixty-three dollars. Yeah, the sheriff made the case and Mr. Allen made the case, but the real problem is, I went back and did a forensic audit on the budget. And I looked at it. I said, now, this is not making sense. See, next year, you'll be at seventeen point five six nine mil. The law only allow you to go to twenty mil. Plus, you'll be broke. We have to bear that bet. If you look at, if you do a forensic audit and you look at the various departments, one of the things we looked at was this. The sheriff was saying, well, I've got all these people, eighty-five, ninety percent black, of course, in the jail. Now, would they be there when Mr. Cohelius was working for the DA office? The DA office has, gets four times more money than the public defender. The point there is, all those young black men and the few black women who are in jail wouldn't be there if they had appropriate representation. So that's a ricochet effect of what you do. So if the DA office and the public defender office were getting the same amount of money, it wouldn't be just us, it would be just this. So that's why so many end up talking about their own paper. They didn't have nobody representing. And Mr. Cohelius was over there, he knew that. Look at your budget. So I'm saying there are consequences. The final thing I'm bringing to your attention now, when you have a public hearing, we're going to show you how this thing needs to be done. I told Commissioner Edwards, because we were talking about, was it Daniel D. Ford? I think Daniel D. Ford was the author of The Last of the Mohicans, eighteen twenty-six. But what, uh...
Who was? I'm sorry. Who was the author?
Oh, I don't understand you.
Who was the author?
What are you saying?
Did you say Daniel D. Ford?
No, no. I was thinking about another, James Seymour Cooper. He did The Last of the Mohicans.
The actor or the author?
The author.
Okay.
And in that, it showed the saga of this, this for fortune now. And what we have here is, we have to get a firm account on what we are doing and why we are doing to see if there's any justification for it. See, the thing that was wrong was, the finance committee just took the sheriff's office information and Mr. Allen's office as a worry. But think about this. Do you know that was a hundred years different from the time when George Washington came president, his salary was set by GSA at twenty-five thousand dollars a year? That would be two million dollars in twenty-twenty-one terms. But it took President Washington two years to accept it because he recognized it was public service. Now, the first eight presidents were not U.S. citizens. They were citizens of the crown. Did you know that? The first eight presidents. But George Washington took two years before he would accept the twenty-five thousand dollars because he was so grateful. I'm ignoring all the things and all the slaves he had. That was fundamentally wrong because everything they did and wrote in the Constitution was contrary to reality and fact. But what I'm saying, it was a hundred years from the time George Washington was president until the president got a raise. That was General Ulysses S. Grant, a hundred years going from twenty-five thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars. This is public service, and you have to recognize that. You cannot compete with the private sector. As I said, President Kreschien was making six hundred thousand dollars a year, but he wanted to serve his country. Now, there should have been more vetting if the finance committee understood what they were doing and what their duty is to the citizens of the United States, of the state of Georgia, and of Darty County, eighty percent of whom are African-American or black, who not have the money in most cases. Now, you think of what would happen, what we were able to do with nothing to assist twenty-five hundred businesses. And altogether, there were seven thousand businesses of that type that did get those PPP funds, but it ran out. The last thing I'll tell you about is, if you look at that handout we gave you on June twenty eighth, it shows what we do at the Federal Reserve Bank of Atlanta. Now, I'm not saying that they do not do it at the other, there are thirteen Federal Reserve Banks in the United States. The one in Atlanta had more money than nine of them. Our job is advise the board of governors of the Federal Reserve Bank. The Federal Reserve Bank president advises president of the United States. So when you look at that, all the things you're talking about inflation, we get it two years before it hit the American public. Go back and look at that handout. I gave you eight pages showing you what we do and on inflation power. So one thing we could do with ARP funds, if you knew what you were doing, and I'm not saying you do not, but I'm saying something is wrong if it takes out your M and O budget, fifty-three million dollars, then you add another four million dollars, and you lost twelve thousand people. Now, there is just a lot in there. There is no way mathematically you can lose that many people and your M and O budget costs the same thing. Now, if Mr. Newsland tells you that something is just wrong with the way he was running Auburn Ave., you cannot justify that. You cannot justify this increase just because, and I'm not saying the sheriff is not doing a good job. But if you were to match that with the DA office and the public defender, if they had an equal amount of money, you would not have so many young black men on paper or in that jail because they would have some just this, et cetera, just us. Now, when you get those public hearings, and we're going to show how you do the ARP funds, what you need to do, when Commissioner Edwards and a couple of other commissioners, we were talking about this. Take the ARP funds, have the investment bankers come here, set up a deferred comp. They could take that deferred comp and go to any bank in the United States, set up an annuity and borrow eighty percent of the value of that distribution. That'll keep it from the combined effect because we would have to pay that millage increase forever. We'll be at seventeen and a half mil, we're seventeen point six nine, and you can only go twenty mil. The school board is already at eighteen point six. So, see, everything you do is going to have a ricochet effect. Now, we're meeting with the city in the morning. City's thinking about doing the same thing. You know, the city's budget is three hundred million dollars, and they're going to back up instead of rolling it back, going to say, we need to keep the sixty-three thousand dollars. Again, you lost twelve thousand people, and you leave sixty-three thousand, you got a three hundred million dollar budget. The three of you go through a billion dollars in fourteen months. I went and checked the city's part, and I checked yours, and, well, every now and then I get a little bit excited, so I apologize. But there's no justification in what you're doing. There's just no justification in it. But when you have a public hearings, just expect it because we're going to, now, we've given you enough information. Now, you could pay Mr. Ed Hall or anybody else you want to pay twenty-four hundred dollars just to drive down here and then pay another twenty-four hundred dollars to have coffee and do bookkeeping, which is what it is. You can act a lot of students at Phoebe and all these other places that when William Wright served as full-time instructor at Albany State and at GSU and other places, they are managers now in these various facilities. Check any of them. So what you're doing is reckless and is wrong. So thank you for the opportunity. See, if you have any questions. Again, we're going to be at seventeen and a half mil, or you're going to be broke, or both. Because, look at that movie Clueless, and you'll understand. Twelve thousand people less should not cost more money. It's supposed to go down.
Mr. Wright, before you go, with all due respect to you, sir.
Yes.
You've been coming a long time. And, you know, I feel your passion. I know that you're passionate about what you're saying and about your work. However, when you come in here and talk down at us, calling us liars, cheaters, stealing, we're not stealing, you know, I'm not speaking for all the commissioners, I'm speaking for Anthony Jones. I don't think anyone, I don't think any citizen of Darty County voted in any liars, any stealers, any cheaters, or anyone who's clueless. And I feel your passion, but certainly, when you come to that podium and come down to that well, I think that there's a certain amount of professionalism that you should maintain. I mean, you've said that we were, we had less than, most, the majority of the folk that we had hired, you said that they were Caucasian Americans. We pull the facts, and seventy percent of the folk that we hire are African-American, look like you and I. But I just hope that when you come back and you come back to the well, even if you think I'm a liar, don't call me one. Call me out to the side. Let's talk about the lying and the cheating and stealing out there. I don't want you to talk about me in a public setting and the rest of us because of the fact that you keep coming. And then after a while, the people in the audience are probably thinking that we are liars, thieves. But I'm going to defend myself. I'm going to defend myself against you and anybody else when you call me something that I know I'm not.
Right.
But when you come, you know, I understand. I feel your passion. I've been watching you for years and years and years. But when you come, you'll get a whole lot of results trying to rob, trying to get bees, trying to get honey out of a bee nest. You'll get more, you'll get more. If you throw up in the bees, you're going to throw them out, you're going to bring them all out. But if you carefully put your equipment on and go up, then you can, you can get some honey. But just, just, just respect us like you want us to respect you. That's all I'm saying. I don't want to get in a, I don't want to get in a pushing and shoving match with you. But, but I just, you know, I just, it just seems to go on and on, and I just have to, I wasn't going to go any further today. I just had to tell you that. And, and I appreciate your work.
Well, appreciated. And the only thing I think you misunderstood, I did not say that about you or any of the commissioners. I said that there was a lie in what was being done. There's no way mathematically. And I apologize for being an instructor of mathematics. But some things just do not add up, that you lose twelve thousand people, and that assessment was a report card on all of us. And yes, we can all prove, but if you took that, I'm sorry, you were incorrect. That never was the intention. First of all, I am a professional, and I have done it for many years, and I intend to continue to maintain that. And we're scheduled for the twenty-sixth. We will take care of that and take care of the other things. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other delegations that did not previously sign up to which to be heard at this time? All right. Purchases considered for action, a resolution providing for the execution and acceptance of the contract to install playground equipment at Radium Overlook Park for the Public Works Department from the lowest quoted vendor Game Time out of Longwood, Florida, and the amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and four cents, subject to execution by the county administrator. Funding gets budgeted in Squad Seven, County Parks Improvement Equipment. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, call them out for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to board appointments. Appointments are made by nominations. Pages for each board are indicated below. All right. First, Albany Darty Land Bank, two appointments for the two-year term ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Incumbents Thelma Adams-Johnson and Larry Thomas desire reappointment. Two new applicants, Darlene Price and Will Reese. The county administrator recommends the reappointment of the incumbents. I'll now open nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Will Reese.
Okay. For which position?
The first one that's available.
There are actually four appointments, two incumbents and two new applicants.
I read that differently, and pardon me if I'm getting something wrong.
It's two appointments, and then it's for individuals, the two incumbents.
There are two appointments. So I'll make sure I got this correct.
Okay.
There are two spots that are available.
Right.
There are two incumbents who do, who do desire reappointment, and then there are two new applicants. There's a total of four applicants for two positions, and there are two incumbents that do desire reappointment. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. All right, here's how I'm going to proceed.
Well, that's the case. I was misunderstood.
Ah, I understand now. Okay. Is there a nomination of the incumbent slate?
I nominate the incumbent slate.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Those in favor of Thelma Adams-Johnson and Larry Thomas to be reappointed to Albany Darty Land Bank, signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
All right, they're reappointed. Aspire Behavioral Health and Developmental Disability Services Board, incumbent Dr. Eugene Sherman desires reappointment. Two new applicants, Joe Austin and Amber Marshall. I'll now open nominations.
I nominate Dr. Eugene Sherman.
Okay. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Those in favor of Dr. Sherman, signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
All right, he's reappointed. Department of Family and Children's Services, one appointment with a five-year term ending July, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Incumbent Dr. Carolyn Hand desires reappointment. One new applicant, Rosalynn Fowler Flickins. All right, I'll now open nominations.
I'd like to nominate the incumbent, Dr. Carolyn Hand.
Okay. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Those in favor of Dr. Hand, signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
All right. Economic Development Commission, two appointments for the two-year term ending July thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Incumbents Chris Hatcher and Commissioner Clinton Johnson desire reappointment. The position held by commissioner is appointed by the chairman. I reappoint Commissioner Johnson and thank him for his service. Two new applicants, Fred Gigliari and Cedric Jackson. As to the physician held by incumbent Chris Hatcher, I'll now accept nominations.
I nominate the incumbent, Chris Hatcher.
All right. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Those in favor of incumbent Chris Hatcher signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Tax Assessors Board, one appointment with an unexpired three-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Incumbent Warren Grant relocated outside of Darty County. Two new applicants, George Anderson and Darlene Price. And there is a resolution for said appointment attached. Mr. Lee, I'm presuming that once we make the appointment, that we need to make a formal motion to pass the resolution, which you've already prepared. Is that correct?
Which one are we talking about? Name is chairman?
Tax Assessors Board.
Tax Assessor Board, yes. And that one, Mr. Chairman, the State Revenue Department as well as state law requires that that appointment be made by resolution.
Okay.
You have an attached resolution that simply says that the, this board is desirous of appointing blank, and there are two applicants there, to the Darty County Board of Tax Assessors to fill the unexpired term of Warren Grant that was created by the resignation of Warren Grant. So there'll be, need to be a motion to pass that resolution with a name attached.
I got it. And here's how we'll proceed, is we'll proceed in the fashion as we have with in terms of nominations. I'll then announce the appointment, and then I'll call for a second action, which will be for a motion to pass a resolution approving the appointment of that person, if that is, if that suffices, Mr. Lee.
Well, all you need to do is make a motion to pass the resolution appointing blank to the position of Darty County, to the position of the Board of Darty County Tax Assessors. Just somebody make, make a motion with a name attached.
I think we're saying the same thing a different way.
Might be.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to nominate George Anderson on the Tax Assessor Board.
It's not a nomination, it's a motion.
Motion.
I, I, I think, I've got this. I've got this. Here's, here's what I'm going to do. It's exactly what I said in the first place. I'll now accept nominations for the Tax Assessors Board. Nominations are open.
I nominate George Anderson.
Okay. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Those in favor of George Anderson, signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, I'll call for a motion for us to pass a resol, pass the resolution that has been attached to the agenda that Mr. Lee has referenced, appointing Mr. Anderson to the Tax Assessors Board. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, call them out for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Additional business, consider for action a resolution declaring the listed vehicles and equipment as surplus and authorizing sale of the same via an online auction. Is there a motion?
So, but.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, call them out for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the resolution declaring the listed equipment as surplus and authorize the disposal of same. This is a listing of equipment damaged by water in the judicial building for the sheriff's office. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? There being none, call them out for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the resolution providing for acceptance of the annual cooperative agreement with Turner Job Corps Center in Darty County outlining the assistance of the Darty County Police Department in performing law enforcement duties. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? There being none, call them out for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the recommendation from the Finance Committee to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget for the general fund from fifty-six million eighty-seven thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars to fifty-eight million nine hundred seventy-one dollars and eight, excuse, nine hundred seventy-one thousand and eighty dollars, and to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget for the Special Services District from eight million one hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred forty-two dollars to eight million five hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred two dollars. Mr. McCoy.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to point out, as you all know, a lot of work went into getting us to this point. We were made aware June twenty-third, and here it is July nineteenth, and a decision is about to be made, and we think that it is a good decision. And the impetus for this was to address our hard-to-field positions. The sheriff came to us, the Darty County Police Chief, as well as our EMS Director, identified several positions that were very difficult to fill. These are critical roles. It impacts human health, life, safety in our community, and a plan was developed to increase just pay in order to be more competitive in the marketplace to attract and retain employees. Staff's original recommendation was to use fund balance to pay for this expense, but we felt that using the ARP, A-money, was the best course of action, although it comes along with risk. What's the risk? The risk is, once the pandemic is declared over, we can no longer use these funds for premium pay. So this is what this is, premium pay, with the understanding that the board approved the implementation of a pay and class study. It'll take about six months. That will include everyone. And so next fiscal year, when we, well, later on in this fiscal year, we'll go through the budget development process, and we will consider what needs to be done in terms of pay adjustments for everybody. But in this particular instance, the hard-to-field positions, the patrol officers, paramedics, and detention officers will see the largest increase. There was some information, some misinformation that went out last week that everybody's getting twenty percent raise. That is incorrect. That is incorrect. Misinformation, and so we want to straighten that out, that this is for the hard-to-field positions only, and everyone else will receive, everyone else in public safety will see a pay adjustment somewhere between two and two and a half percent. And those that are not in public safety will receive a thousand-dollar lump sum distribution. And the reason that we had to adjust everyone else is once you adjust everyone at the bottom, you end up dealing with pay compression. And so you had to adjust everybody up, but we couldn't do a flat across the board, twenty percent. That, just couldn't afford to do that. But anyway, we wanted to address those items and, and, and bring it to everybody's attention.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCoy, and thank you for the hard work of the Finance Committee, and this is a unanimous recommendation from the Finance Committee. At this time, I call for a motion from the Chair. I'm sorry? Did you have, you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Let's do this. Let's get a motion in a second and then have discussion. There, that's okay.
That's fine.
All right. At this time, I call for a motion from the Chair of the Finance Committee.
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Jones.
Discussion. I'm just happy to, to be able to, to do this for our employees. Certainly, I always have our employees at the, at the forefront of my mind always because they're, they're the soldiers and they're the ones on the ground. But I say to this commission, as we move forward, after the money, after, after the, the ARP money runs out, this time when we look at a, when we look at this situation, first time Mr. Walls recommended one thing, we did something different. But I hope that we were carefully doing this time here, when we get ready to move forward, that we will do what, something that needs to be done, and our employees, we need to always keep them at our forefront. When we, whatever, whatever position we take or whatever we do going forward, I want us to put in a plan to sustain these, to sustain these pay increases for these folks because of the fact that they get a pay increase today, then two years later, they don't get one, maybe three years. So we need to, we need to pool all our resources to, to help sustain these raises. I mean, we need to bring in the University of Georgia, whoever we can bring in, Carl Vincent Center, Ed Walls, and formulate a plan that we can look at our employees for over a long term and be able to sustain those pay increases. That's, but I'm glad that we're doing what we're doing today. But going forward, we, we just going to have to make a hard decision.
Understood. All right. Yes, Commissioner.
On that distribution, can you give me that month?
Yes, sir. Great question. We initially proposed December for the lump sum distribution, but we have modified our recommendation, and we are recommending that the pay increases go into effect in August, as well as the lump sum distribution going to effect in August.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
Very good. I'm sorry?
That's all.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Gaines.
Is that reflected in the update to the budget that we got?
Yes, ma'am. We, we've.
I mean, those dates.
We, it's on the record now, but the, the, the funding allocation is there, so once you adopt it, the money's there, and then we can distribute it.
So it wasn't for the full fiscal year, the amended budget that we saw?
Yes, the, the amended budget will be for the remainder of the fiscal year unless it's amended again.
All right. Very good. Let's call them out for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Before I turn things back over to Mr. McCoy, I did want to correct a misstatement earlier. I went back through my notes, Commissioner Gaines. You were correct. There is more of an impact to the Special Services District. It is, I think, a dollar and three cents as opposed, so it's three dollars and twelve cents per, I think, hundred thousand versus two dollars and nine cents. So those still nominal overall.
Oh, yes.
But, but you're, absolutely, it's technically correct, and I did want to correct that for the record and.
Yes, because it reflects the growth in the digest in the service district.
And I think that is an excellent point, and I caught your point earlier, which was the growth within the Special Services District actually impacted the overall digest.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
It did. And that's what's driving it.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think that was an excellent point. Thank you very much.
Yes, indeed. And I think our citizens need to understand that, that the unimportant rated part of the county is doing well.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I think that is a very good point. Point well taken, and thank you for allowing me to correct that mistake. Absolutely. Mr. McCoy.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Lee.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gaines.
Yes, please. Two points, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we asked the, Mr. McCoy, to give us a full briefing on the American Rescue Plan, and I think it's critically important that we go ahead and do that so we fully understand what that money can be used for, given that there is a sunset on the use of the money, both driven by a date as well as a circumstance. The circumstance being that when the, on, on certain expenditures, when the, the emergency is no longer there, that you cannot use it, and then secondly, that date of the twenty-fourth. So those two drivers indicate that we need to fully understand how to use those funds and use it in a timely manner. So if we could have that full briefing as soon as possible, it would be good.
Mr. McCoy, we can, we can get a presentation together, too.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. So we'll be more than happy to do that at the appropriate time. As we mentioned previously, there, there are interim final rules. The comment, public comment period just ended June sixteenth, and we're not sure when the final rules will be implemented, so having that discussion may be premature. Also, NACO, ACCG, GCCMA, as well as the Carl Vincent Institute are providing training sessions for commissioners, administrators, and anyone else who's interested in participating, and that'll go on to the end of this month, as they are trying to help us unpack this very complicated legislation.
Can we forward that information to our commissioners and Commissioner Gaines to the extent she may want to participate?
Yes, ACCG has been sending it out, and we'll reset it when they.
Would be great.
Announce the webinar dates.
Yeah, I just think it's terribly aware that we be kept abreast of how we can use that money. We have some very creative members of this commission who, if they are aware of it, certainly would, would be able to help in deciding how we use that money, and, and that's the point I'm making.
Yes, ma'am. And I, I want to.
I, I just want to point out one thing in that regard. I was thinking about Robert Cross Park, and we've lost quite a bit of revenue over the last eighteen months, and not being able to rent that facility, that's certainly how to quantify as some way to put money back into the Special Services District. You know, I'd love to see that happen.
Yes. I, I want to also reiterate that we shared with the board that we would come with a proposed spending project plan at the end of the first quarter of the fiscal year, so that'll put us around the end of September, that staff feels that we will be in possession to have a discussion about proposed projects and the utilization of those funds.
Okay.
Very good.
One other point.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I've noticed, I think, even in some information from Phoebe Putney, that our COVID vaccine rate hovers somewhere in the upper thirty percent. But what I did notice about it in looking at the Department of Health's website is that they are using an overall population figure of some ninety-one thousand, and we're down around about eighty-four thousand, eighty-two, eighty-four thousand, which would, if we use that base, we're probably more in the mid-forty percent. So, so that's good to know. And it's good to know also that ninety percent of our citizens over sixty-five have had the vaccine.
Yes, ma'am.
That bodes very well. So those two facts that generally, we're probably in mid-forty percent, and secondly, those over sixty-five and most vulnerable are in the ninety percent. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for.
Commissioner Newsom.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm the new kid on the block, so I want to tell this commission and these commissioners how much I appreciate them helping me come through my first budget cycle and with the spirit and harmony that we all share here. And, you know, our work's not finished, so I look forward to working some more and doing exactly what Mr. Jones, Commissioner Jones is, was saying, and we're, we're not finished. We, we still have to go a little bit down the road. So just thank you all.
Thank you. Very good. Commissioner Gray?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Johnson.
Nothing further, sir.
We're adjourned.